Well, hi, everybody. We're right on time. It is six twenty-two recording for the same council work session. Um, we'll call please. Uh, this is a work session uh to discuss.
I I'm sorry, on video, I can't hear anything.
You know, is it not? Oh, Kristen, are you unplugging it?
Okay. Okay, Hannah, I can hear you, but I could not hear anything that happened before you just talked.
Can you hear us at this point?
Yes.
All right. All right, excellent.
Um, Christian, thoughts for Richard Arden? Uh, I think um it's kind of odd not facing you all, I'm sorry. The biggest things that we kind of talked about of the sandwich boards that come so we have made were um the issues with it were ADA, you know, uh accessibility in general. Um, that by far is the most important in my mind, and I had hope others as well. Um, but also just general clutterness were points made and other such issues with walkability, feel the town, how easy it is to walk around when it's crowded. Uh, those are the main kind of things that we're looking at when it comes to uh why we're moving forward or rather away from them. Um, and the things we're going towards, I think we were all looking at various ideas. They were, there was a fair amount of ideas that I don't think any of us made a strong point that that one is the way to go in period. So I think it's pretty open to discussion as to what feels best.
At the risk of everyone with the IRA, I brought the issue up because they are not in compliance with our current code. Having those signs is is not part of what we should have downtown. I'm concerned about ADA compliance as well as just general uh accessibility for people. Uh, strollers, uh for people who are walking their dogs or any of those types of things as well as um with the number that we have had when we, when we had an initial conversation about this versus the number we have now. It is becoming an issue of visual clutter, and I don't mean anything against anybody's sign, but you can have too much visual litter and you'll lose what you're trying to lose your point in trying to get your message out there.
Thank you. My biggest concern right now is that the sandwich boards are effective. They they actually do work. We we know that, okay? So what we need to do is make sure that we have an answer in place that is effective uh before we take the sandwich boards. There there are all these great reasons why the sandwich boards are not a good idea, but the one reason they are a good idea is they help businesses that are not on Harrison Avenue. And and that's important, and that's, that has to be foremost to our mind as we go forward. So that's the whole objective here. We have a lot of people here, business people especially, uh whose businesses are not on Harrison Avenue. And so the sandwich boards play a key role um in visitation and traffic to their businesses or their museums or wherever it is. Um, and and I I just, I don't want to screw that up. Um, the work session itself, Lori, um, what do you have for us?
Well, and uh Mayor, did you get the email I sent you with um Councilmember Hill had a con, his own comments he wanted read into the record?
Would I have them right here?
Yeah, I think it now would be a good time to do that.
Okay. This is from uh Councilmember Hill. Hello, Lori, I will, I will not be able to attend the work session on May ninth, so I am writing this email to share my position on the matter and to have it read into the record. My position on the sandwich board style sides is that we should allow them in the retail corner. We have many things that are allowed on the sidewalks. This includes tables, chairs, benches, vending machines, bike racks, wayfaring signs, trash receptables, street lamps, flower planters. How do we get down Harrison Avenue? Boys, um, in the summer, and there is, and and there is even, I'm not sure why, all of a sudden, it has been determined that they are the items that are in the way and visual litter. I happen to think that the boards are not litter, but rather they give the town some character and allow the businesses to portray their image the way they see fit. Of the signs have proven to be effective marketing tools for businesses that are off the avenue and in a good way for the businesses on the avenue to promote um what is going on in their establishments. I know there's a banner option that has been proposed, but I don't think those are as effective as something that is on the street level like a sandwich board is. To not allow the sandwich boards would be damaging to our businesses, and I do not agree with that stance. We should introduce clear language in the ordinance as to what size the signs could be, where the signs can be located in the sidewalk, and to only allow them during the establishment's business hours. If we did that, I feel as if the signs would not be a nuisance and would continue to benefit our businesses. Tim Hill.
Yes, Tracy.
Is that?
I'd actually like to hear from them.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Um, should we just go around the room? Would that be uh make more sense rather than do a free-for-all? If we want to do that, let me start with Nancy Bailey.
Everybody, I'm Nancy Bailey, Director of the Level Main Street Program. I am also in North Avenue, New Business Center, um, stopped opening on Sunday. Thing was like, um, I am written with the Level Main Street Program for about going on three years, and we have been talking about this for quite some time. I do, I do want to point out, we do have um counterparts in other areas of the state that have come up against this, you know, this um, this challenge um between finding a balance of protecting the historic authenticity of Main Street without compromising that um as well as the aviation. So I mean, I do have a personal vested interest. Um, I would like to have a sandwich board sign out on the corner of Fifth Street. Um, but I'm also interested in um solution in a path forward, more permanent solutions.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, uh Ted Green, um, my wife and I own Blue Flower Candy and Provisions, and he like led both on Seventh Street off of Harrison Avenue. Um, we do have sandwich board, we have two, one on either side of Harrison. And uh they are extremely effective for us. I mean, I would say ten to twenty percent of the traffic we get is from those signs. Um, I also think that um you know, any of the solutions that I saw on the deck that was kind of in this, in the meeting agenda are just not as effective. Uh, they need to be street level, just like everybody said. And they kind of need to be in your face and give the persona of the business. So um, you know, I'd love to be able to continue to use them. And uh, that's kind of my decision.
I can not add one thing that I I feel like just personally, the sign code is contradictory. Um, the language in the sign code uh to me um seems contradictory in one sense, it says you can, and then other areas in the code it says you cannot. So until that gets addressed, I feel like, you know, the path forward will really be depending upon what that, what that code would apply.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, too, um, you know, the ADA thing, I, you know, I have, yeah, most respect and and um is first and foremost in my mind, but again, like, we addressed all that last year with our signs, and there's, there's no issue. Um, the sidewalks are not clutter. We don't live in Manhattan. And even in the summertime, like, it's very easy to walk up and down Harrison Avenue. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Also.
I'm also of freight and the Tourism Bureau, whatever, you know. Um, and we do not use our sandwich board signs for we finding, use it to let people know what's going on in freight, and that changes every month. So some of the solutions that council has presented and that has been um kind of kicked around for a couple of years would not suit us at all. So I'd like to see a solution for my business that would allow for beauty.
Thank you. Go to Destiny.
Um, yeah, so I think I'm on the same page with everybody, uh, to be honest. Having a storefront simply is just not enough. Um, and I've recognized that, and I've noticed that, and it seems crazy that you would think having storefront location right on Harrison Avenue would make sense to everybody and you, everybody would know sort of what you are, but I sort of struggle with that hurdle all the time. Um, where people are like, we don't really know what that shop is, or we don't know what this space is. And to Elsa's point, this was my, one of my initial thoughts was um the sandwich boards offer additional information. And that changes daily, that changes weekly, that changes monthly by what we're trying to promote, by what we're trying to affair in the community. Um, and I don't really know what the problem with ADA accessibility is. Um, I have a daughter and I walk around with a stroller with no minimal issues. Um, I don't really ever feel like I'm like I don't have like things in my way. Um, so that seems kind of irrelevant to me. Um. So, yeah, I think the biggest thing is it provides information at eye level. I mean, the sort of the point of it is to be in your way. So you see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
My thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm the newbie in the crowd. I'm Ryan Kelsey, I'm the new general manager over at the Delaware. Um, representing the Delaware and the Mineral tonight. Uh, so not a whole lot of feedback from my point of perspective at this point, except for the fact that I do know for our purposes, it definitely has a draw. We are definitely seeing an impact. And for what I can tell in my short time in the area, I do believe that there is a proper size and a location that it can actually be a very beneficial item for all the businesses expected because it is at the level and it is eye catching. Uh, you know, from the ADA standpoint, clearly we need to work together to find a solution. But I do believe that if the code isn't correct across the board, that needs to be addressed first. And then from there, I think if you guys can find a a way to work together to find the solution, that a a good idea is to have something that is promoting your business, especially for ours or Mineral, not directly on Harrison Avenue, it is a very big draw for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having here.
Jeff?
Uh, Jeff McGinnis with Manhattan Bar and Silver City Printing. Uh, because I'm a printer, I tend to print things out, and so I brought these things. I'm just going to lay them up here because mostly they were to the point, and feel free to be comfortable with the policy. Mostly they were to the point of things being in the way, ADA accessibility. There's, I took these this morning, obviously there's not a crowd, but but if you look at it visually, uh, you can see that the walking pathway and the traffic travelways are absolutely open. Uh, aside from other things, it's, it's, it's garbage cans, street lights, uh vending the 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 advertising boxes. Um, and so if you look at, for example, there's a picture in there of the Blue Flower Candy sign, you can see visually that that is absolutely no farther out than any of the other items. So from an accessibility and ADA standpoint, I would agree with some of the other comments that that can be incorporated into code. Um, you know, as the Manhattan Bar, I think of uh um, the shovel man, for example, the code issue. And uh every darn winter, I had Joe Squire, when he was here, coming by the Manhattan Bar, saying, Jeff, you need to clean up the sidewalk. What's I got? You got to worry about people getting through here. You got to worry about accessibility. My point is that it was something that was able to be governed by a code, a code stance and a written code. And I believe that these signs uh can be addressed in a similar fashion because, as Kim said, and others have said, uh, from an economic perspective, the impact is gigantic. And I certainly believe that uh both for business owners, their employees, the taxes, the collects, sales revenue, uh, the impact is is very large. And so I would encourage City Council to, at the very minimum, examine this, uh, examine this issue a little bit more closely before a blanket uh ban on uh red board signs. Uh, I do believe that um we can get around it with a code issue or with a code, proper written code.
Thank you, Bill. Like to hear from you.
Um, let's see, a couple of issues we need to be in. Well, first of all, I'd like to second Mayor's observation that the post drive, as we think between the third and the camp of our visitorship. This got to me this night, and we didn't have to start, it's about, and also I heard a little, um, so I think it's crucial for our organization. Um, there's another point I'd like to make. We talk about um uh obstructions and clusters and that sort of thing. Just since this was starting and I was in Florida, I was visiting Paris for a couple of weeks, and I started yelling, saying, how many sandwich boards are up in Paris along with all the these stores and outdoor dining and that kind of thing? And um, one of the things I noticed is that that what you call clutter actually engages people and and makes them interact with their immediate environment, slows the damage to the road that Paris a lot more credit and local, of course, and then you, you know, neighborhood. Um, I would also like to mention, you could when I'm talking to the Hudson photos, uh, but any old photo of downtown London, I need to start a photo, shows an enormous number of signs, many more than we have now, that stick out when everything or a plant in the street. Um, and uh so if you're in, we're gonna maintain an historic aspect, and I think a lot of stuff is created access.
Yeah, and I'm hearing.
And I like to restart these other things that we don't want to tell the community here. Um, and um, I think actually having these things on on this, this is a positive thing. And and this is not a vision I had initially, this is actually self-induced, and I think it was your daughter, this is clearly, but I would say, um, this sidewalk sign, uh, but our curator, Tommy, insisted, and and she was absolutely right. Um, now I'm glad to tell you that, with, I've spent consistent over the years. And uh, as you can, you know, this place has most, most more so than this, the small sign. And then we also have, we made that movement. So we think we ought to keep what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Dan?
Uh, Dan, I'm one of the owners of the Golden Borough. Um, we haven't used sandwich boards all that much, but whenever tonight, I think we're gonna, we're gonna invest. If 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 the uncertainty that their use can do themselves. Um, but um, and and uh, in the past line, I did some ADA litigation. And we got an injunction against the city of Houston because they weren't improving their streets well enough. Um, uh, but but there is a way to to work with the sign, but if you can, you can have regulations to post, and like, it's like we have a sidewalk permit for cables, uh, but we're required to keep the six-foot area like clear of the passage. And that's, that's a little bit more than the ADA requires. But um, you know, I think it is probably workable on most of the streets. Um, I I would also like to make one other comment, and that's that the other sidewalks in the non-business district, and I think, because it's interviews, a lot of improvement. And if you're talking about ADs.
We don't, we don't disagree with that. Does anything in dual side of, thank you, Dan. You're gonna get no argument on that one. Megan, do you want to speak?
I'm agreeing on her a little bit, but I, you know, like it's intense that every now and then I will be arguing with our team, and we thought we might. I assume you've done.
All right, thank you. Kathy?
Well, I've been on this business year, all within pretty dirt. And um, I agree with what, most of what Kim said, and Bill for sure, and Jeff, and the young lady with white sweater, I don't think I know her, but I like what she said. And um, I see businesses come, and I see businesses grow, and I have been here since nineteen seventy-three. I worked at mine, I took the ground, so I have good idea of what works and what doesn't. And I will say, um, what you're, that you're saying about the sandwich signs, and I would say keep the codes to a minimum, make them look even more crazy. As long as they're safe and that they're weighted down. And I would say, don't make them take them in every night, or, because you have people walking around. In the evening, they come through, drive them, but no, they see those. So we don't want to get them there, but we want to make it safe. And unfortunately, I have a really nice heavy one, and someone stole it, so I just have some, let's make sure that right now. But um, they are so affected. Last weekend, I had a couple of them come in, oh, man, I need a knife. So I think, oh, it's your sandwich sign. And they came in and they, you know, they got a kick out of us, and I said, well, there are other, you know, businesses on the side of the streets too. Then I know, for that, I get a lot of business when, well, when the parker here puts their sign out, I get business. And then when people see my sign, I get sent, they say, how's the boy? I said, oh, my customers love it. And they do, and I send them home. So we're all supposed to be helping each other, but seldom, in all the years I've been here, do I see that much support from the city? We need more support from the city council. And I think if the moral, and you like it, those signs could be, they attract more attention. And I will say with myself, my baby friends, we like to go out too much, and dinner once in a while. We're watching that Delaware sign, we tell you. I mean, it's very effective, even for the locals, again. You know, because people in the suburbs sometimes live out of town, they come in and they see a new sign or a sign they've never noticed. Oh, well, I think maybe I could do my shop in here instead of have to go to Denver. So it really is effective. And I have been here since nineteen seventy-three, there's always been sandwich signs here. You know, the only thing that I can say is some of them might need a little wait for when the weather's bad, or someone like that, like. I, I knew them. And I, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't have any trouble getting around, you know, to walk in when I have to go someplace. I'm glad to see them. I'm glad because, and there's a lot of people that, you know, I get the newspaper, but I love the newspaper. But some people don't get it. And so when they're driving through, they see the signs, they're like. You know, and they want to go, and they, and it really makes a difference. And the new candy shop at Home, you know, that's different. And then the other new store, one of the girls getting in that sells, you know, all Colorado stuff. Yeah, it, I mean, it really affects people and business, and we're reflecting. You know, every person's doing it. We love that too. All the people from Rock and Rich that come up, and I get people from all over, and I always ask them, they come, and they always tell me to be careful. Colorado Springs, you know, we get a lot of Halloween, some people, oh, we love that because it's so different. So and and I will say, the people who came this weekend, they said, I asked them, I said, did you see the new directories? And they said, whatever I read. You can't read it when you're driving by. And people are in a hurry these days. You know, like I said, I'm all over the dirt, so I'm not in as much of a hurry, but when I meet customers, they are in a hurry. So, you know, you you really have to, you know, hit while, while they aren't in touch, so to speak, because, you know, people are in such a hurry these days too. So when they're driving through, they can't read those dirt, because they're on the zoom. The ones that rock so far, you know, and they're not at eye level, but I mean, I they say, we don't want you to look like Pragmich. We don't want you to look like Aspen, and, you know, ticket people every two minutes. I mean, Aspen has a whole group of people who walk around with those little outfits and they ticket you. And they really upset the tourists, you know, they really press them on, on each other. And so, I mean, free parking is something we love here. And they look like they think we're all very friendly. They want to keep that going. I mean, we only have a couple of months, we really busy. And we need to take advantage of that. That's, you know, um, that's, that's, that's pretty much. And then the other thing is too, somebody made the point that if they, we have bicycle racks and we have all this other, you know, why do we have our sandwich signs? Let's have a waiver, let's, you know, make sure we can continue to have them because it certainly affects business significantly.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Sure.
Steve, you want to speak?
Yes, um, well, I seem to be a descending voice here. I think the bicycle racks are good, the trash cans are good, obviously the light bulbs. Um, I think the sign, sandwich signs should be limited to just people that are off the avenue. So I'm totally against Delaware having one, totally against freight having one. Um, I'm totally against um having two signs on the avenue. Because why can't everybody have two signs? I mean, it is, it is kind of a clutter issue. Um, also, the uh in front of the Chinese restaurant, which is no longer a Chinese restaurant, there's, I think, six or seven of those piosques, or whatever you call them, magazines coming. I don't think they should be there at all. I mean, uh, Harold Democratic had one in front of the business, that's fine. The rest of them need to go. Um, so it would be nice to have, and if you had two businesses on one side street, then maybe, or three, we could have a provision that uh one sandwich sign would uh have three businesses on it.
Yeah.
On both, I'm talking, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking. Okay, so one, one business could be three, you interrupt me here. So you could start out with maybe one business on the side, and somebody else has a business on that street. Then they get half of the uh sign, both sides. And then a third business, then we divide into thirds. And then if a fourth business would show up, then you have no sign, and it'd be two on each sign for that one street. Um, but um, you know, Bill Corr made kind of a good point, and the point is that it, uh, that this seems to be selling everybody is that we um utilize these signs, uh, it brings business into our stores. Well, I worked at bookstore four years. Um, it was seven days a week for almost those four years. And we didn't have a sandwich sign, and we did incredibly well at that business. Um, people came in to buy things, and they were happy that they were there. So I think it has, has a lot to do with what you put in your windows. If you have a name that's blue vessel that says nothing about flowers, we don't know that that's flowers. Well, but you know what I'm saying.
It's not, are you? He's, that was the floor.
Yeah, we should, so the, the, the thing is, it should be more, you know, well, okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, my name is Yvonne. I know this is somewhere, yes, I've got someone going in the works, but I'm an active community member. I walk everywhere in the belt. The only time I drive is to go to the grocery service, and just to get my security to walk back in, and I just sort of kind of hearing you here. But I love the sandwich boards. There are things that I have learned that's going on in the community that uh, that business hours, new stores that popped up that I didn't know about. I'm, I'm in full support of small business in the sandwich board stands. I, I pay attention. I, I'm now in needs, um, friend rally, because I work all day long and in long hours. And so seeing the sandwich boards even after hours, oh, this is going to take place at the Delaware or at Freight or business, business hours of uh zero day or whatever. Um, I, I appreciate that as a community member, it's for our small business. So thank you guys for having us.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm here representing myself and off of the railroad.
And your name?
Um, I was also born and raised here. My parents still live down on Elm Street. And one of the things that I always loved about Ludlil is how quirky and unique we are. We change, but we stay the same, we keep our people. Um, we have a lot of historical significance, some of them being kind of the crazy and the weird and the eclectic here, and that's something that shouldn't go away. The sandwich boards, in my opinion, serve two purposes. One is to give community information, so that's going to be more for your locals. One is to give community information, so that's going to be more for your locals. People that are looking for, oh, hey, what's going on tonight? Oh, does the venue change? All this information. The second purpose is to drive people to your business. Especially in the suburbs, if you have a business that is off of Harris Avenue, it is detrimental to not have some signage to get people towards your business. Especially if you're something small, or something is not, something you're not coming from a destination specifically. So, I think from what I've heard from everybody here, one of the major issues is the fact that the code just doesn't seem to be fair, clear, and concise. So let's get a fair, clear, and concise code together, and I think we can make everybody happy. Or at least not super mad.
Thank you.
My name is Kirsten, I've worked for the railroad, I've worked with a number of small businesses around town. Um, I do agree that the sandwich boards are huge for finding people, people finding different things. But I also do think that there does need to be a reevaluation and a reestablishment of what a real code is. What does that code look like, and who can utilize it to their advantage and maybe who can't? There is such thing as double signage, you know, that one of my signs down on Main Street would oftentimes get replaced with remaps. Although I hate visiting my sign because it's the heaviest one I can possibly buy, so I feel bad for them. But I do agree, there needs to be a code, there needs to be an established way in which you can get a sign. I also, in transportation, I know there's no way around ADA codes, you have to follow ADA codes. But I agree that there needs to be more discussion about what that could look like if obviously we are not following what ADA specifications have for our main street. One of the point is multitudes of the sandwich boards downtown, for many of our small businesses, number one are free, and number two are their only advertiser. I'd love to be able to find a way to keep this to be a free program so that people could share their business, whether they're on Main Street or off Main Street, with the people who are driving through downtown. I know everything comes at a price these days, but I will say that's one of the three things that we have for advertising. And if there's a way to keep that, even for some of our businesses that actually really need that, that would be amazing. I will say, if you're only willing to allow me to have signs to keep my business hours of operation, I, my railroad's not going to put it up, I can't lift that thing more than twice a year and around what. But also, there are other business community members who don't have employees, who can go down at five o'clock and remove that sign. Or come in at eight thirty AM to quit the sign up. So although it's a nice idea, I highly doubt if we follow. Yep. Your turn.
My name is Julie Edwards. Becky and I own Two Dog Market down on Harrison Avenue. And we never bought a sandwich sign because the code says you can't have one. To Mr. Corn's point, sandwich signs are very much a historic part of Harrison Avenue, they always have been. Any old historic photographs that you'll ever look at will show sandwich signs up and down the avenue. It would be nice if the code changes to be able to do a sandwich sign, because I didn't know, every one of us can use all the advertising we can get. And it is very effective at drawing traffic that is a lot of times just passing through town and not necessarily planning to stop. Thank you.
I would tend to agree that, and to Nancy's point, the code is contradictory, and I've looked at it myself, so, please, Kristin. Yeah.
You said something that I wanted to say that I couldn't, and that is, those of us who know the rules are going to follow them. Those of us who are brave enough to ask the policeman in their office what you're going to do about it, and they're saying nothing are freaking awesome. And those of us who have managers first, I excuse men and women, are going to leave those dang signs because they're scared. Like just ask, please treat everybody equally. And if we're going to change the code, change the code. If you're not going to change the code, but you're going to live with it, please don't put officers to my pleasure, business, just care my manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, I mean, you've heard a lot, any, anything that prompted additional? Oh, hi.
I'm at the wrong table. Anyway, I'm Joe Keegan, I run the RB Corral Tiny House Community on Second Street. I'm really surprised this is even an issue. They're not cluttered, they're not cluttering the sidewalk. They're done tastefully, I haven't critiqued each one, but, uh, and like historically, you know, but you're not seeing these cars where the boards wander around, that might be a little strange.
Do you own a chicken soup?
So I do have, um, I do have a sandwich sign. It's on the corner of Harrell's. And on the other side of the street, there's a very tastefully pastime sign. When I got here five years ago, it's chained to these concrete blocks. And so in the winter, I make sure it's off the sidewalks so they can plow. I don't have the key to this chain, so I'm not bringing that thing in every night, I mean, but we're open twenty-four hours, so that could be a little. Basically, I'm not sure this site brings in business for us, because most of the people that stay at our community, whether it's a tiny house or an RV lot, they're already booked by the time they get here. But what it does do is help them find us, you know, it's there on the corner. And I'm like, well, if you can find Earl, you can find Tiny House. And, um, I, I would, where can I get a copy of the code? Because I'm pretty much ignorant as to what went down.
It's on the left.
Okay.
It's pretty easy to navigate, actually.
Numbers on our plan the code.
I don't, not top of my head, anybody know what the, what the numbers off the code?
That's correct.
And what does it go today? Because I, I can say I have a license for one.
No matter what else happens after this meeting, the code has to change. Whether it changes to, to put parameters around signs. I don't know, I don't want to get too far ahead of us, the code has to change, that's, that's a given.
There's a summary, if you're, the summary answer to that is there's a one-page summary that's including the council packet, very nice, available online on the city website. And it summarizes the whole, whole code online in one page.
This is, this is as good a conversation as I've ever heard. So thank you. At this point, I'd like to hear from city council members and our city administrator, Lori, would you like to lead us out?
Sure, I'd be happy to, and I think we can say that this definitely is a success. We've had two prior work sessions on this topic, and we, I think, wanted to hear what we've heard tonight, which is input from the public. And, you know, the council, is the memorandum I put together for the meeting tonight indicated, this subject came up last summer because the city received two ADA complaints that there were sandwich board signs blocking not the actual ramps, but, but the turning radius needed for access to the sidewalk once you're up the ramp. And so what this did is it brought the issue to our attention. And where, you know, a sandwich board signs may have been historically present on the avenue, what we realized is that they were popping up more frequently. And since this council first looked at this issue, I think I've counted at least four new signs. And so, like, the issue really was, is, okay, what are we going to do about this? And we asked our, our city attorney to give us a legal opinion, which is included in the packet materials, which really outlined the bottom line of the code is, and this was presented the first work session, is that under our current code, our city attorney says that sandwich board signs aren't legal. So, you know, we're essentially, you know, some, some folks think there's ambiguity in the code. We now have a legal opinion saying they're not legal. So that's, that's the reality of it, we have to deal with that, that is something that I asked for, we got, so when the council first met, the idea was, okay, what, what should we do about this? And as, by way of background, the council decided that, you know, the sandwich board, they, they really weren't in favor of the sandwich board signs being a permanent solution, but would allow them temporarily until better solution was, uh, it's, you know, presented or developed. And out of fairness to the businesses who use that, in, you know, use sandwich boards for advertising. And so that's, that's really where we are, so that's where we started, that's how the issue came about. You know, what I think is that sandwich boards generally were just popped up, and, and nobody paid attention to them. No one really looked at the code until we got some complaints, and then when we looked at it, we're like, oh, we've got an opinion now that says they're not legal, we need to deal with this. And so that's where we've been for a while, which is, what do we do about this issue now knowing that it's, it's, they're not legal? And as the mayor said, it's right, we need to change the code one way or the other. We either, the, the city council needs to make a decision, and, and just by way of, of setting the framework for tonight, tonight is a work session, so the council cannot make any decisions or take a vote this evening. The purpose of tonight was to get feedback from the public and to hear from the public, because I think a couple of the prior meetings, you know, folks were guessing as to what businesses may want or not want. And so we, we wanted to make sure we got the word out to businesses to hear from them. And I think that, that's, you know, that was the purpose of tonight, is so the council could hear that, and then make a decision as, you know, at a, at a regular scheduled, regular council meeting, agendized item to say, okay, what are we going to do? Are we going to change the code to legalize them, or are we going to have them not, you know, be legal and come up with an alternative? I think the one concern I have is, uh, it, whatever it is, if we allow them, we need to have pretty good guidance on how to regulate them. So, not just permit, but placement, number, and design, and those types of things need to be laid out and would need to be included in the code. And I also think just number total, not number per business, but number of signs per Harrison Avenue total. Because they think what we're seeing, and that the, you know, more and more signs keep popping up. And I, and I understand that right now, you know, there's a debate about are they cluttered, are they not cluttered? But I think we need to decide how many total for Harrison Avenue, and then permit them accordingly, if the council decides that that's the, the course they want to take. I think what I'm looking for and what staff is looking for is guidance on which direction wo- wo- would the council like us, you know, get no vote, but some guidance on what you pursue, alternative, looking at ways to maintain the sandwich board signs on Harris. And, and I want to point out, Chapin is at the meeting as well, Chapin is our planning director. He was in a, formerly in another mountain town and in charge of their sign code. And so, Mayor, whenever you think it's appropriate, I would like to give him an opportunity to talk about sort of some of his experience with this as well.
Any input, Chapin?
I think that in a lot of the comments that you made tonight, we're obviously, you know, talking about how the, the additional marketing component that, that the sandwich board signs provide to these businesses. And I think that, you know, that marketing message is valuable. So I think that's something that we should continue to figure out a way out, can we buy that additional, you know, marketing message? And whether it's with sandwich board signs or an alternative, I don't, I'm not very, I don't have a strong opinion on that, but the additional marketing is, I
Thank you. Um, yes, also.
When Katie and I counted, um, to see you should chat too, about coming tonight, we counted twenty-two signs on that, and yeah. Just to Lori's point about like what a max could be, that's where we were on Monday. Yesterday.
I'd love to hear from city council about what you've heard, the direction we've discussed, Sharon, would you take the time?
Sure, I appreciate all of you, your time and energy and caution for coming to talk about the signs. I did want to address Destiny, pushing a stroller as an able-bodied person is different than trying to navigate when you live in a wheelchair or you have to use other, other equipment to navigate. I appreciate that you've never struggled, but know that others may have. Yeah, so thank you for listening to me. Um, I, and the other point I wanted to make is when I spoke about it being clutter, I'm not knocking anybody's sign, their designs, their logos, or anything. But we've all been in a big city when there's billboards after billboards after billboards, and you can't even read one for the next one coming. And that's what I don't want to happen, I don't want you to lose the ability to advertise because we have too many and we have too much going on, and they're not placed appropriately.
Thank you.
Similarly, this discussion, of course, started with the complaints, that's why we mentioned the ADA. It's not that, it currently is an issue, obviously, we've seen through pictures and just from experience, it is a lot better handled than it used to be. Large part, obviously, thanks to you all, but also because it was pointed out that it was an issue. Because it was certainly an issue. I think we hovered this idea at one of the city council meetings, I don't know who it was, but that we could have the sandwich boards at a certain location with a certain amount of them, allowing for whatever advertisement off Harrison, that might make sense as a solution, but that if we were going to go to the sandwich board route, that it had to be very limited. And I still think that point stands, I think some point, we can't just have an, an unbound number of sandwich boards out and about for everyone, there has to be some type of limit. Same with any other thing that may impede anything, so that could be with trash cans, vending machines, whatever else issues, I don't see how light poles would have been an issue, but, um, I, I think that it's obviously important, I can see that, and I, I'm not here to say that it isn't important to your business, but it's also important to note that, you know, there are other people who are going to use the sidewalk, and we need to share the space equally. And I think there's a big issue with having a specific amount, you know, um, sandwich boards with a specific size, um, design, I don't really, very much, to be honest, I think you guys can handle that, it's your business, but
Look alike and say the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I get that, I'm not, I'm not against you there.
Well, let, let him finish what he has to say.
I'm not saying they look the same or not, in fact, I just said literally that I don't care, like they could look however they want.
But you said the same size, the same shape, shame everything.
Ted, sure, you'll have it up to you.
Um, yeah, I do think they have to be ADA compliant, whatever that means, if they can be in a different shape and a different color, by all means, I don't care. As long as they're in code, as long as they're okay for our community to use, as long as they allow space, if we need to have multiple in one area because there's too many businesses and you guys don't want to share a billboard or a sandwich sign, fine, as long as there's some way to manage that, so it's fair for all businesses, and it's maybe it's a first come, first served policy, maybe it's a reapply whenever it makes sense. I'm not sure, but it has to do with parents, all the businesses. For example, too, maybe a little bit too much if we're actually struggling for the room, which I don't know if we are, but if that's the case, then we should really look at all of these things and manage it properly, because at the end of the day, this is something that we want to make sure doesn't get to the place where it was before, which was obviously impeding, we had reports of it, impeding with ADA compliance and having, causing other issues. And I don't think it's appropriate to just say, oh, well, we'll let it be for now, and then we'll come back to it once it becomes an issue again, I'd rather it's just be solved now. That way, everyone knows what the norms are, maybe we revisit it in five years, say, this didn't work at all, there was too little signs. Maybe it becomes an issue in one year, you guys come back and say twenty-two isn't enough, or whatever number it decides. At the end of the day, there has to be some regulation on it, there has to be some guidance on it towards what it's generally placed, and generally what makes sense in terms of size, and I think message matters, you guys can put whatever you want on it, and colors sing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
I would, I'd like to hear Tracy first.
I just want to know, can we know the particular sign that was like an issue?
And it was from a competing business, so, I don't know, it's kind of suspect to begin with.
I just, I would, I
When there was a complaint, you moved them immediately, and then there was no further complaint.
Yeah, I feel like we could operate under a little self-governance. If it's in the way, then let's just move it.
Which is, which is what happened, so I, I think it was a one-off issue.
Um, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. At one time, I also had a
At one time, I also had a business off of Harrison and I had a sandwich board sign until the city plow truck took it out. And Bud wouldn't pay me. So um I like the signs. I like the personality. I like that Leville is eccentric. If you've ever been to a place like Hill in the Head, where you're afraid to scratch yourself or someone's gonna arrest you, I don't want that to be like that. So if we can, if there's a way to on the ADA ramps to mark out an area that says no signs in this area to comply, so that there is that turning radius. I don't know what the regulations are on that, but I think that we need to change the code. We need to regulate them as to number um not design, but placement. And possibly total number that gets out of control. But yeah, I don't have a.
If I may, it's come up two or three times about the total number of signs. And one thing I would want to be really clear about is a business owner here in Leadville is if the rules apply to one person, they apply to everybody. So if you're off Harrison Avenue and you're allowed to have a sandwich sign, but you're on Harrison Avenue and you're not, then everybody on Harrison Avenue can't have one. If everybody's allowed to have one, everybody should be allowed to have one. That should be very clearly spelled out and you guys do what you're gonna do. The rules need to apply the same to everybody.
So when they do have a new code, be sure you're there to make that comment.
Yeah. I would say this and and uh first of all, if we're not here to advocate for our businesses, I'm not sure what we're doing here. Honestly, um I've heard compelling, you know, um arguments for keeping sandwich board signs. And uh I was inclined to go a different direction and I've I've simply changed my mind, you know. Uh, the reason I I went down this road, me personally, went down this road at all is about seven years ago, as not too long after I was mayor, we had a representative from CDOT here. And he's in charge of all the CDOT rights of way in this region. And he told me that all the sandwich boards are illegal. And uh so we talked about it. I said, well, what are we supposed to do about that? He said, well, what you need is wayfinding. That's, that would be their purpose. I'm I'm not saying this is run wrong. I'm just saying this is what I was told. And he told me that several times over the years. The good news is, we always said, you know what? We'll, we'll get to the wayfinding thing, but but we don't have the bandwidth to it. He said, okay, we're patient, not a problem. I've since been assured um that that's not correct. What he told me was not correct. That CDOT doesn't, doesn't have a right to the right way. Their right way does extend from building front to building front. Okay? That's true. However, they have ceded authority for for anything past curd to curd to the city of Leadville. That's, that's my latest understanding of where we are on that. So I'm not so worried about CDOT, um but I just wanted to give you some insights into into why it's, it's even come up in in the past about those sandwich board sites. Um, my opinion at this point, and this is a city council decision on one vote out of seven, um, is that we should change the code to make them legal. And that we should, if we feel the need, put in place some parameters, whatever those are. The side has to be weighted. It can't be bigger than a certain size. So somebody doesn't put some ginormous sign on the avenue, although nobody's done that yet. Signs are all approximately the same size and and I also agree with what I've heard that that they shouldn't be monolithic at all. You know, you, we had talked about, maybe they should all have the same font or the same color. And and from what I've heard, I I don't, I no longer believe that. I believe that that the the individual nature of every business is expressed in those signs or hopefully is expressed in the sign. Um, so at at this point, I I, well, thanks to all of you, I've really changed my mind. I want to support our businesses. I think the sandwich boards need to stay. Um, but I would ask a general question and you guys can chime in as you see fit. What parameters would be reasonable in terms of of the sides and what would be unreasonable?
I mean, I I would say definitely weighted the size of the sign, um. Maybe not like the exact sign, but can't be bigger than certain parameters. And then um I think location is important.
You know, Kurtson, Kirsten mentioned they moved her side to put their sign in place. I think we, we might have, have to have, you know, a little less Wild West when it comes to the signs.
I'd like to follow.
Please.
One of the questions I have is, is it important to be on the corner? Or can it be that like ten feet or five feet? Or do you think being on that corner is super important?
I honestly don't know, but I would say intuitively it's important to be on the corner.
Except you're, you're about ten feet back right there.
Yeah. Well, we've got, we've got two.
Maybe, maybe you could.
Um, I have a suggestion that comes with the code. Um, I think that right now it's based on um zoning, like there's a big graph, there's a big chart in the sign code that's cut up into zones. And it, I feel like a business is a business. So it'd be nice if the code were not specifically zoned.
Okay.
I'm in a transitional residential, my business, and it's a legit business. Everything else is commercial about it. But in the sign code, I live in a completely different category.
Christian, thank you.
Super legal.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that, well, you really shouldn't allow sandwich board signs for businesses that aren't located in the you know, near, near it and you shouldn't have a.
No, no, why not? The railroad. Row is no less important than freight or.
I mean, there should have seven quarters.
Yeah, no, okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Don't need to argue, but that's, it occurs to me.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we shouldn't have some of.
So should, should we, I mean, uh to Ted's point, should we have one sandwich board per business?
Yeah.
Well, Ted's likely agree with. Oh, I did it. All right, definitely. My mistake.
Maybe, maybe the, actually, I think the question, businesses, I mean, me, we should definitely have a definition of what that is. And potentially it should be one, one sign per business license, uh because otherwise I don't know how you define business. Uh, but I also, I also want to get some clarity because I'm listening to folks and I just want to understand. You know, the off Harrison versus on Harrison sign. I hear some people saying everybody should be treated equally. But I do think that what I've heard is that a lot of businesses off of Harrison really feel like very valuable to point people in their direction. And that's, and I don't know how you do a geographic limit on that, because I think the mayor's point is valid as to, you know, who, who, who can? How far away are you allowed to be and have a sign on Harrison?
Well, I mean, could we look at the future growth of the district? I mean, I'm pretty sure in some plan, on one of our many, many plans. We've identified the side streets as future growth areas. Is that correct?
That is true, but we're also in, in the, in the, the comprehensive plan. We have like a three-mile radius plan. So I don't, but you might be fine. I don't, I'm not saying that's, that's, Steve, yes, please.
Okay, well, I didn't get to finish what I wanted to say, but uh sorry, I didn't mean to target the business. But um the uh, I, I was told by somebody at some point, if you're not on Harrison Avenue, you're dead. And that's why um I think the focus should, I, I want to have a bookstore where my residence is right now. And I, if I have a sign there, my business name that I have license for right now is Must Scratch Dreaming. Of course, that helps if I have a bookstore, but if I have one third of a sign, I have Must Scratch Dreaming and bookstore there. And, you know, that little bit of exposure would be enough to get people comfortable with street. Going tiny with what you're talking about, the expanding, I think that's what our focus is here. The businesses will expand up the side streets. But I think having extra signs on business, on the stuff that for businesses that are half Harrison Avenue strangles that road. And also if our business, my point was, if your business doesn't clearly tell what it is from some advertising that's there, people won't know what it is. So why do we have to have another sign post? That should be able to put up in your business window on Harrison Avenue, is what I'm saying.
All right, thank you.
I just want to point out, I mean, the current sign code and the way it reads is there are size parameters. It's fifteen square feet. Um, so, so there are things in place in the sign code, sign code that we, we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel there. Um, the only thing that we would have to do is come up with some meaningful parameters around placement.
So that's three by five, wouldn't. I mean, I.
I mean, that's a guy that's like, you're, you're.
It's pretty big, isn't it?
Actually, mine's very large. But I don't put mine out there anymore.
Regular sign, twenty-five square feet.
Mine's not weighted one, so it can easily fall over on somebody. Um, and that's the main reason, actually. Um, otherwise I would have it open. I paid for it.
A waiting system out of putting this, hanging a sandbag right in the middle.
I've never done it.
Okay.
I did never.
Okay.
So two, if I may, two destinies, that's, that's very true. And we all have to remember, we're gonna use sandwich board signs. The liability still belongs to the business owner. So if you put a unsafe sign out and it blows in front and falls on a little kid.
Yes, I don't want it to fall on anybody. I don't want that.
So yeah, it, it'll be self-policing because of the liability issue, I guess, is my point is going to be.
You would hope so, but yeah, that's, that's a very good point. Um, I, I'm gonna kind of repeat, remember, city council make, can't make a decision like. But we, we do need to reach a decision point at some point. So I know it takes a lot to, for all of you to be here. But we're, we're going to need your input as we go forward. Uh, but tonight, the things we've talked about, we talked about ADA, I think that was a one-time problem. But I think that's a, that's an issue that uh that just needs to be watched, that's all. I don't, I don't think uh it shouldn't be a problem, but if it is, it's, it's easily corrected. Um, when we did uh in approach for licensing, we, we said six-foot pathway. That's, that's what we've requested, required on Harrison Avenue. I think it's a good rule. I think it allows traffic in the summer to flow uh in both directions, uh certainly allow somebody uh who's in a wheelchair to move around town freely. I've even seen people in wheelchairs at, at Ski Joint. I, I don't know how they do it. Uh, it's a, it's quite incredible that people are polite and they, they let them through. Um, we talked about um placement, uh maybe important individual placement where, where your individual permit allows you a spot, whatever that is. Um, how we manage that, not quite sure. Elsa.
Well, I appreciate in the sign code right now, it said that you have to have an agreement. But right now it says you have to be off Harrison and that you have to have an agreement with a business who owns storefront property on Main Street. So I appreciate that it's a partnership, that you're not competing if you're off of Main Street and it has to be more of a discussion. Just putting that out there, it feels, it feels, um, you know.
Yeah, beat off Harrison makes perfect sense unless you, unless the snowplow is gonna take your sign out. Yes, Chris.
And you won't pay for it. What about, so you're all here, who else do you play your sign out? Somebody comes in and puts one right in front. How do we deal with that?
There'll be gunplay.
Well, I, I think, I think that's a good.
They're going to see you're coming the other direction.
Permission from the person's storefront, so that person would get permission to.
Okay, hang on a second. Lori, yes, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I think that raises a good point, um, that we would need to have a distance between the signs requirement. Then that's how you deal with that, is, is there just would be a minimum distance between the signs.
Maybe a sideline thing. You might, might have to decide that at a future meeting and say, okay, if you're driving down Harrison and you have two signs, how much distance does it take to be able to see the second sign? Uh, I don't, it's rhetorical in nature. I don't know the answer to that.
Like we're really trying to over-regulate something super, super simple.
Problem solved.
This is super simple.
And you may be wrong. I mean, maybe, I'm just, I'm just talking about possible options. I'm just getting your opinion.
Yeah.
And what options might be.
We are a city and we have to function as a city. I see one thing, for instance, is when Casa Sanchez, that their big food truck delivery needs to park in the middle of the street, the police officers get after them all the time, I feel like, I've noticed. And I, even for me, for just like unloading ten minutes, if like my whole side street is parked, like we have to learn how to coexist, but this really isn't. I just, we're grass, downtown is a grassroots effort. Our business is our person and our, our personality. I mean, essentially our businesses make our downtown. If we're not successful, you guys aren't successful because I mean, we are a core amount of your tax dollars.
You're the heartbeat, the heartbeat of our community.
I just.
Yep. But I, actually, I agree with you. I, I see the trucks parked in the middle. What option is there?
Well, you, you can't do the back alleys because they're so narrow and they're obviously outdated historically. But even if, I mean, there were previously, historically, whatever, however you want to cite it, sandwich boards on Harrison Avenue, can we evolve past that? To now do, have a new culture within our businesses? I just feel like I could get on my.
Well, we talked about size. We talked about having, having it be weighted. I'm just talking about general premise, what would make sense to have in code and what would make sense to not have a code. We talked about making sure the code doesn't eliminate his own. You know, uh, the, the signage maybe be, maybe irrespective of zones. I don't know what zone the master's mine is in. But there we go, a sign for the master's mine, so um. Uh, and then uh one side for business license. What, what am I missing?
For business place.
Joe.
One more thing, just as far as placement and limited amounts of real estate. Um, you've mentioned that signs on corners are, are preferable. That doesn't do any good for me. I'm on the street, so maybe if you have business frontage on Harrison Avenue, your sign is required to be in front of your business.
Yeah.
Maybe if you're.
Side streets could take priority.
Those are the ones that give intersections and then give the official.
For us, not for you guys.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't want to see these signs.
No, that's not what I meant to happen.
No, and I understand that, and, and that's, but I wouldn't want to see that either.
Yeah.
But if you're.
It, it, yeah, let Joey have the floor, because it's really hard to hear when someone talks over him. So it, Joey, I want to hear what you have to say.
Just, just very quickly, if you have, if you have a storefront on Harrison Avenue, maybe your sign's required to be in front of your store. And if you have a business off of Harrison Avenue, you can then have access to those corners that, that maybe potentially have slightly better visibility, uh having everybody wanting their signs on the corners doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Right, thank you, Joey. Elsa.
Uh, just a quick question about that, since I don't have a Harrison uh business front. Um, but going back to what it says now, that there has to be permission from the current storefront owner for somebody to put their sandwich board in front. Um, Q, I think it'd be nice to make a decision about that or not. Because if I had a storefront downtown, I would want control over what's in front of my storefront. So if it could be clear whether you have to get permission from the storefront owner or whether the city gets to decide where you get to place your sign, I think that should be really clear, please. I really appreciate that comment as well. I just feel like the line is a little bit blurry here with ownership. Like business owners are expected to maintain outside of our storefronts for snow removal. But now the city is claiming that you guys own it and now we're trying to regulate signage.
Not own it, control right away. There's, there's a big difference.
Okay, well, is there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, why wouldn't you guys then shovel all the sidewalks anyways? I just, I just. I just, I just, uh, we're moving on. Same thing with signage.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Well, I've always had permission because for some reason I didn't know that I was supposed to get permission. And I have been friends with the different owners with my signage, but now it's for rent. And it's like, like that person gets in there and doesn't love me. You know, and I've been here for umpteen years and I really need that spot. So that's a big, would be a big issue for me because, you know, that brings me more than half my business.
Gotcha.
And you know, luckily I've always got one that's really good, but now it's for rent, and so like, oh, what's gonna happen then?
Who knows who's gonna be there next? And how do we differentiate between the 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 front of a store versus corner? Sections, I believe you, I don't know the answer to that, I'm just suggesting that is, is part of what we need to consider.
And also plenty of boxes in the summer, you know, that 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 builds up some space on the avenue as well, so I'll have to be really mindful about, you know. Kind of how we, how we work around those types of things as well. Those are also advertising opportunities too, in case y'all have.
Uh, I guess, what I see is if we're gonna limit where they are, where they go, and uh, say for example, the distance between them, which I don't know, that we would. Um, but I mean, there's going to be an inherent amount of signs where you're gonna reach the maximum. I remember this, before you can no longer put this, any signs up that aren't code viable. I don't know if we go by, assume that every building could be a potential business and then each building gets one sign lotted towards in front of their area and then corners are run. Um, sign each corner and then call it good and then maybe go by permit based or.
I just don't even think there needs to be a number limit. I really don't, I don't think that needs to be a parameter, unless it's one per business storefront.
I I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying if we have certain regulations. That's great, can I speak please?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that there is a specific limit that we're saying, oh, we can't have more than fifty signs, I think that if we're going to have regulations around um, where they can be placed and how big they are and where they can go and if they need to be spaced, if we're gonna consider space and this is more so through city council than businesses, if they're gonna be spaced, that means that there's going to be inherently a maximum amount of business light or signs that there can be, period, that's just the reality of it, that's how things work, right? Uh, if a sidewalk is fifty feet and we only allow sign each five feet, there's going to be an inherent.
Each sidewalk.
So, I I, okay, that's not the point, not making an exact point, I'm just saying, okay, can I speak please? So if we're going to take that to consideration, which isn't something that I feel strongly about, I'm just saying, if we're going to consider, there's going to be an inherent amount of number of signs that are gonna be available, so if we're going to regulate the distance between each sign and we're gonna regulate where signs go and where they can't go, then there's going to be an inherent amount of signs that is available to be placed. That's just the way it works, that's how, how it works and we should probably figure out what that number is to see if that makes sense. If we're not gonna go that route, then generally we should still have the regulations around what sizes they should be and where they can be placed at the very least.
So, I want to really remember, this is a conversation, there is nothing definitive in anything that we're talking about here. And so the decisions need to be made, but they can't be made tonight to the work session. Uh, which is why you guys are here to help us through this process. And Steve first.
Okay, well, building on what you're talking about. Maybe in the beginning there would be no restrictions as far as the amount because we, we're not uh, we don't have too many right now.
We're not there.
We're not there yet, so maybe a vision should be for when we get there. That um, it favors off uh, off the avenue businesses. So if all of a sudden there's more, a lot more off the avenue businesses, then the uh, mass lines in particular location um, for businesses that are on Harrison Avenue would be taken away. Some lottery system or something, if there's five businesses on Harrison Avenue that have five signs in one particular stretch of the street. And then all of a sudden we've got lots of businesses going up that way or that way, then there could be some kind of a, you know, equilibrium as far as the the limit that we would reach. Which is based on the handicap access, turnaround, the uh, distance that becomes determined between the signs. And how many of these players are going to be the way?
Elsa.
Uh, just a timeline suggestion. Uh, we're still in mud season right now, so even then, get our little survey of how many signs are on Harrison. I know we're gonna pop up this summer, so maybe a lot of the work could get done except this kind of like final touches and then see what Harrison looks like at max capacity in the summer and make those final adjustments for like potentially a distance that's actually a problem between them, that can be solved at the last meeting. Or if too many signs are within one block, that could get solved at the last meeting, but I think that what we're observing day to day on Harrison Avenue is not our max, so solving some of these issues really can actually be it.
Thank you. Nancy.
Yeah, um, I wish Adam was here from the Turbin panel last year, and and the reason this came up um, is someone put a sandwich board sign um, in front of the visitor center from the sidewalk there and nobody needed the visitor board. Okay, so there was some guy from Texas that decided to hole up in our community for the summer and do these guided tours in a fancy B and B, okay, that's just an example. Of of kind of, you know, those types of uh, you know, anomalies that are not part of the fabric of our historic downtown. Um, like, you know, the mineral or, you know, your business, so um, I I did want to throw that out there that in the code when it does get reevaluated, I think that that kind of caveat needs to be highlighted.
Definitely.
Um, I think one of the parameters just needs to be, it's fair for all businesses and in my mind one sandwich board per business, I mean, how do you determine? What if, then it goes back to what?
Joey.
Joey, thank you, I knew you. Because Joey was saying was like, well, why is it fair if everybody off Harrison Avenue gets one and then all of a sudden I pay for, I pay for my storefront, I pay to be there, I pay a lot of money. I, I, so, I don't have one out there right now, but the more we're talking about it, I'm like, man. I'm, I like, I, but seriously though, I've been like refocusing on marketing, right? In general, like, there's a lot of people who haven't even been into my storefront, I've had some girl come in and be like, I've been here three years and I've never been downtown and it's like, what are you even doing? Um, but so, I just, it just needs to be fair, because then I think the proximity thing in my mind is like, so I just moved into um, my second location boutique, um, and it was Galena, Sweeter Than Honey, B and B Shipping.
Right.
And those are like boom, 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 like my storefront is like, I swear, fifteen feet long, is like tiny. Um, but honestly, yeah, I'm gonna cross promote, just as Elsa wants to cross promote. I, this is like, I need to cross promote for both places to function and to be successful and like like I said, I'll pay to be down there.
Thank you, Claire.
So I think one thing that we can call, that we used to agree on, is that sandwich boards are going to stay in some capacity. And I think we all can agree on that we are currently in business. With that being said, can I put my sign back?
If Destiny wants to put hers up tomorrow, I can remember if it goes back on the other.
My answer is, uh, technically they're illegal, but they're all over town, so I'm not sure uh, that that dealing with sandwich boards right now is something we would care to do, that's my opinion.
I I don't. Yeah, I would say, I don't think it makes sense that we would enforce it, if we're gonna keep everyone.
You know, we we, Elsa was asking about timing, and so I want to go to that because.
I think Chapin has, Chapin have a comment?
Um, I mean, if you want to enforce it, you have to enforce it unanimously and very.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Exactly, which means it would be done, so.
So I.
So, I agree with that, I would say to Elsa's question about timing is it takes a long time to change code, it's just the nature of what we do. First of all, we have to arrive at a decision and and that could take a couple of different meetings. And then we have to decide, we have to make a decision, okay, what changes are we making to code? And then we have to send it to our attorney, and then our attorney has to send it back to us, uh, and then we have to go through the first reading and second reading. I'm going to make the 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 brave prediction that sandwich boards are not gonna change this summer. I don't see, I don't see how it's even possible. It's not strictly my call, don't get me wrong, but that's my opinion.
We also have a lot of other things going on, so I don't think we're.
We might want to fix things that are actually broke, Nancy, you had your hand up?
I was just gonna say, um, I appreciate you guys listening to us and actually being with the journey.
Um, this has been the best work, work session I've ever been in, so thank you. Uh, that having been said, are there any final thoughts, Frederick?
Is there any opportunity on some of these side buildings to put signs right above the first floor?
Oh my gosh. Sign code in general, I mean, I, being an off Harrison business. Sign code in general, this sounds really, really hard to say, so looking at the whole sign code, not just these temporary sign codes, but banners, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say banners. Uh, and um, like what can go on walls?
To left, since Jeff left, let's pick on the man having.
Yeah.
I mean, there is an opportunity here to put a small sign that says, he buy this way.
That has your permit. Currently, so. Per permit, permitted. Permitted, so if there's, if we're, if you're gonna look at the whole sign code, that would be awesome, to open up all sorts of signage would be amazing.
Good thinking, to your point, the problem with having signs up high is that you can't change them. The nice thing about the sandwich boards is that they can be relevant to current events.
They would definitely wouldn't be, I'm not saying it's not permitted, I'm saying it's a supplement.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Especially if we ever discuss and go more into depth about are there going to be limits on how many signs there are, um, it would make sense to utilize the space available. For whatever the occasion may be, especially for more permanent uh, business that's constant, um, and that isn't really looking for something like Elsa's looking for, which is information giving, but more so just, you know, candy stores this way, go for it.
Sure, you love a quiet.
I'm listening.
Are you really? Okay, good.
Of course.
Um, Lori, your final thoughts?
I I've been taking notes on what everybody has said and I think, uh, I I I would agree that our entire sign code needs to be like that. But I would also say, how about our entire code needs to be looked at, you know, we're, we're a city that adopted code, you know, over time and and I would tell you, you know, working with Chapin and he agrees, every single time we look at the code, we we realize we can improve it. And so I I think we can, and and you know, why does this need to be regulated? It's because we have friction about it right now, you know, and and I think we just need to come up with community standards and and that's what you do with the permitting process. Is you come up with standards that everybody can mostly live with and and a compromise is generally something that everybody is not entirely happy with, but they can live with, and I think that's we've gotten a lot, I think I took a lot of notes tonight about the feedback that we've gotten from everybody. Uh, but I think this has been, the mayor is absolutely right, this has been the best work session we've had on this yet. Uh, and the best public turnout, so thank you all for coming.
And then following what Lori just said, so she said, you know, her paperwork needs to be updated, so just so everyone's aware, we have four active code amendment projects going on right now. So we have like, you know, a table of uses project that's been, uh, which is also updates to um, to our definitions or our main uses, um, or accessory, accessory structures, I'm not gonna go on, it's a massive package. Um, that's the one, that's just been explained, the only mission has been in work for five and a half years, that's going to city council in the next upcoming meetings. Um, so that's a massive movement that's happening, uh, we have another, um, just regarding housing, uh, and housing and variety. For the effect of housing affordability, uh, we have, and then the, well, we were here for the, it's sort of reservation development um, this year tonight, so those are just a few examples, you go amendments that are coming to your council members, you know, if if uh, in months and not weeks from now, so there's, there's a lot going on, so this is obviously something additional that we need to work on. And for those, those code amendments to take on, this is the the so very important first initial step in process.
Uh, the next step is, is the city council will need to look at all this with with your input and make some decisions around it. And I don't want to go any further down that rabbit hole right this second. Um, but it it's a, it's a process that, it's a process, that's it. It just takes time and we have to be patient, so. Any final thoughts before we adjourn? Thank you all, it is seven forty-eight, right on time, uh, this work session is adjourned.